I'd like to call to order the Westmont Village Board meeting of January 31st, 2019, to order at 6 o'clock PM and ask Clerk Zimsky for a roll call.
Mayor Gunther?
Here.
The clerks here, Trustee Eddington.
Here.
Trustee Baker.
Here.
You can bake, too. Trustee Barry.
Not really, here.
Trustee Guzzo.
Here.
Trustee Little.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Attorney Zimmack.
Here.
Village Manager May.
Here.
Finance Director Parker.
Here.
Would everybody please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And welcome everyone tonight, getting out of the cold freeze. At this point, we'll do the open forum. There's open forum, anybody who wants to talk about an item that's not on the agenda, now's the time. Seeing none, I'll close open forum and move on to my report. I'd like to call on Trustee Barry to make a comment about one of our business people in the community.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We were hoping tonight to just celebrate Tracy Valerio's 26th anniversary at DJ's, but unfortunately, it's been overshadowed by her mother Shirley passing away this last week. Tracy and Dawn Dispenza, who works at Manning School, and John Dispenza, who works for Public Works, are about as knee-deep in this community as anyone, so our heartfelt sympathy goes out to Tracy and her family, and Dawn and her family in this time of need, and we ask you to keep her in our thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, moving on to the good stuff, swearing in of a new police officer chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have Officer Tim Collins joined our Police Department, and he represents the being number 39 out of 40, the budgeted authorized strength for the department, which we're very proud of. Number 40 is in the police academy as we speak. So Officer Collins is the last one to graduate from the Cook County Sheriff's Police Academy. He has been, he was in the United States Navy for nine years, and he went to Joliet Catholic High School. He graduated with a bachelor's degree from the University of Dubuque, and he worked for several years in the Navy as a youth counselor, so he comes with extensive experience. He will be in solo patrol probably at the end of the March for purposes of being out on his own, so when he, when he's in solo patrol and not in training, he'll be added to the roster for being, working with everybody else. So with that, Mayor, if you can come step forward and swear in.
I can do that.
Officer Collins.
Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Timothy Collins.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The laws of DuPage County.
The laws of DuPage County.
The Westmont Village Code of Ordinances.
The Westmont Code of Village Ordinances.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties for the office of patrolmen.
The duties for office, officer patrolmen.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Go around, say everybody. We always change the order. We're gonna do pictures after the, after the pinning, or after the.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome. Congratulations.
Okay, now to the, the pinning, and the pinning will be done by Officer Collins' father, Lawrence, but I do have to introduce everyone, so Officer Collins' father, Lawrence, is here, Mother Cynthia, Sister Kelly, girlfriend Rebecca are in attendance tonight, supporting Officer Collins. So with that, once you guys go kind of in the middle, and then hopefully, this is as good as it went in practice. we're making him.
Well, I will, I'll keep this short, as promised to many people. I would like to start off by thanking Mayor Gunther for swearing me in. It's an honor, and I know you're a busy man, and it's, I appreciate it very much. I want to thank, especially thank the Village Board, the Fire and Police Commissioners, the, and of course Chief Gunther, for giving me this amazing opportunity with the career as a police officer. It's truly a dream job, and I appreciate the opportunity. I want to thank everyone from the department, everyone from the deputy chiefs, the sergeants, the patrol officers, whether they're here or not, here tonight or not, it doesn't matter. They've, they've all been very welcoming. I know what it's like to be the new guy, with my military experience, being a new guy in the military usually doesn't go this smooth. Everyone's been very welcoming. Any questions or issues I might have, and it's good, because I'll probably have a lot more questions to come in the future. Special thanks to Sergeant Demorzak, who helped me transition into this, this position and get me into the academy, made everything very smooth. He also has helped, helped me with my transition out of the military into the civilian world, so that is greatly appreciated. Excuse me, I had to write down some notes, or else I forget. So moving on to my family, my parents, they've been, you know, every, everything you can ask for in parents. When I think of hard work, I think of them. My father just retired from 41 years with United Airlines, so that just goes to show how, how hard of a working person he can be, working just to keep us in Catholic schools and keep food on the table. My mother, who has just announced that she's retiring this spring from the school system over 36 years, believe over 15 years as a grade school principal, and I thank you guys for your endless support and always being there for me. And my sister Kelly, I didn't know you were gonna come, but thank you, you've always been there for me. My oldest sister, I also have another sister and brother, but one lives out of the country and one lives in Kansas, so they're not gonna make it. Finally, my, my girlfriend Becky, she's, she's been my, you know, my rock throughout this whole process, whether it be making me coffee in the morning before going to go take tests for, for the police, or throughout the academy, always making sure I had breakfast the next morning, and dinner was made when I got home. Believe it or not, even with nine years of military experience, she can still iron military creases in better than me. So I was always the sharpest looking at the academy, and I love you, and I, I'm looking forward to new and great adventures to come in the years to come. So I, like Chief Gunther said, I was in the Navy for nine years. I spent five years in, on USS Ronald Reagan, did a couple deployments in support of wars in Iraq and Afghanistan, as long, excuse me, as well as to some humanitarian efforts, including the tsunami relief in Japan in 2011. I was there for five years, then came back home and became a recruiter in DuPage County, where I really became a part of the community, I, you know, became a fixture in the high schools, the local colleges, the local businesses, and, and I, and I really did love the Navy. I loved putting on the uniform every day, but I knew that it was time to transition to something new, and I wanted to stay home. So I, actually, someone that was here, but he had to step out for, for various reasons, for official reasons. He's, he's kind of inspired me to, to follow, the dream that I've always had is become a police officer. I thought I was a little bit too old, but he told me I'm just the perfect age, and so I went and started testing. It's, I couldn't think of a better way or a better place than Westmont to continue serving not only my community, state of Illinois, but my country, and continue wearing a uniform every day. And, you know, I'm looking forward to serving this community and, and serving everyone proud, and again, I thank you everyone for coming and try to stay warm. Thank you very much.
So two more things very quickly, and as I mentioned at the beginning, we are, Officer Collins represents the 39th out of 40, and we do, number 40 is in the academy, and, and that could not have been possible without the, the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners. All three are seated out in the, in the galley, and.
They stand up.
They can stand up, the Commissioners, please.
Ah, yeah, come on.
So it's been, it's been lots of work on their part. I wanted to be at full strength in my first year as chief, and that didn't happen, it took two years, but it got done, and, and, you know, one year was kind of aggressive, but they worked hard, they've been doing actual meetings, and it's, it's always good to recognize the people that actually do the hiring, they've been picking very, very good qualified people for Westmont, so I thank them. And of course, as is usual and customary, we have cake in the other room, so finish the meeting quickly, and the cake will be fresher.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. All right, I'll move on to my report. The Citizens of the Year nominations are due by Friday, March the 8th. You can go to the Chamber office, or go to westmontchamber.com and get your application. And the Park District, I think in the last couple meetings, we heard about the Park District's new event, the Ale Fest, on February the 9th, a week from Saturday, from 3:00 to 7:00, at Ty Warner Park. Tickets are on sale through the Park District website, so this is the first time doing it at Ty Warner. They're gonna have tents heated, so please come out and enjoy. The 100th Anniversary Committee, which has started a couple years ago, but right now it's 2021, we're only two years away, will have the next meeting February the 14th at 4:00, right here at Village Hall. And that's pretty much what I have. Clerk Zimsky.
I just have a few announcements. The Village Office system will be closed February 18th for President's Day, I just want to give everybody up on that. Downers Grove Township fundraiser for senior programs, A City Barbecue will be hosting a fundraiser at 1034 West Ogden in Downers Grove on Friday, February 1st tomorrow, to benefit senior programs. 25% of all proceeds will go towards the senior programs. Public Information Committee, we will have our meeting on February 27th at 10:00 AM in Village Hall. And I just have to send my condolences to the Valerio family. Anybody that went in DJ's over the years, her mother was in there a lot, Tracy's mother, Shirley, was in there a lot, helping and cooking, and so it's a loss, and they're a wonderful family. Thank you.
All right, Trustee Nero.
Thank you, Mayor, just a couple items. First off, our next Public Works Committee meeting is March 28th, 4:30 PM, right here in Village Hall, and I'd also like to, if we could, give Mike Ramsey, our Public Works Director, and have him come on up, and he wanted to mention a few things about the recent storms, but before he does that, I just want to make sure that, we all remember to thank our public works these past few days, it's been crazy out there, and it's always nice when you know you're in Westmont, you can really tell, and the service is really good, and people, you know, a lot of times don't realize it, but we really do appreciate it. The guys work really hard, they're always waving whenever you see them, and they, they go the extra mile. I even saw a handful of them shoveling out fire hydrants. Somehow, they're getting out of the trucks when it's, you know, sub-zero, and they're really going the extra effort, and people really do appreciate it, so I just wanted to thank them. Thanks.
Thank, thank you very much. It has been taxing a couple, few days here, between the snow and then the ice cold that we've had the last few days. I just wanted to remind residents, and really, they've done a really good job this year, keeping the water running, just even a small drip, just something, just a steady, nice little drip will, will help prevent your, your pipes from freezing. Get some heat on those, on the cold areas in your basement, or in your, or in your crawl space, wherever your water, wherever your water meter might be, make sure you get some heat on that, because it's really important to make sure that stuff doesn't freeze. Compared to a lot of municipalities around us, knock on wood, we have not had a water main break yet. A lot of towns around us have had many. I was just talking, a good friend of mine in Madison, Wisconsin, they had 12 today. They've had 30 since Monday, so we've been very lucky so far, so we'll keep our fingers crossed. We did have some, a couple frozen meters here and there, and some pipes burst. The Fire Department, give them a shout out, because they've done an outstanding job giving us a hand with all that stuff. They, they go out there and respond right away, and then they call us, and we go out and help out as much as we can. Going back to shovel out the hydrants, Fire Department gets credit for that, because they do like 95% of it. We do, when we get a chance to, we'll go out and shovel around, we're out there doing our own cleaning up anyway, but Fire Department's doing an excellent job doing that, so I give them 100% credit for that. But you're right, our guys have been working really hard the last few days, and it has been taxing. It's, you know, it's tough when it's cold out, it takes a lot out of you, but I, I give our residents a, a lot of credit, because without them, we'd have a lot more problems than we do, and they've been doing a great job making sure the water's staying flowing, so I really appreciate it. Just so, just so you guys are aware, we're doing downtown cleanup starting tonight, so tonight, tomorrow, and if there's any, any leftover on Saturday, you'll see the downtown all cleaned up. Okay?
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike, and thanks to our Fire Department, too. I don't want to, I don't want to hurt Deputy Chief Riley's feelings over there, they're obviously very involved, too, but thank you.
All right, Police Department, too.
Police Department as well, everybody.
They're eating cake.
But Public Works doesn't get a lot of the credit all the time, so we gotta throw it to them a little bit.
All right.
Thank you.
Trustee Little.
Thank you, Mayor. The next Administration Finance Committee meeting will be held February the 14th at 4:30, right here in Village Hall. Our community events, the Special Events Corporation, Westmont Special Events, celebrated our 15th anniversary, so thank you, goes out to all the volunteers who work throughout the year to make these events possible. And if you'd like to volunteer for an event like Cruisin' Nights, Taste of Westmont, our pub crawls, we suggest that you contact the WSEC office at 630-829-9378. The Irish jig and swig, who, we've had pub tours, and they're really picking up in, a lot of people are enjoying them, and they're being a huge, huge, huge success. So our next one will be the Irish swig and jig, or jig and swig, I think it is, and that will feature 10 locations this year. The event will be held on Saturday, March 16th, from 2:00 to 6:00 PM, and tickets are online available at westmontevents.com. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Parker.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things this evening. Last week, Westmont First met, and we set up a format for our March meeting. In March, we're gonna have an art, an artist's roundtable forum discussion, so we're doing some planning for that, we're looking forward to that, and inviting the community to participate. And then there will be no Westmont First meeting in February, but we'll meet again in March for this Arts and Artist Roundtable. And then Monday night is our EIC meeting at 6:00 PM in the library, and we have a slide up there talking about the Green Speaker Series that's held at the library in April,
First one is, a week from tomorrow is the Westmont Lions Club reverse raffle. And I have tickets, the mayor has tickets, Jenny Zimsky has tickets, anybody in the Lions Club, it's a hundred dollars. And it's a fun night, so if you want tickets, give me a call. And that's our number one fundraiser of the year. And the other thing that I have tonight is, last week, DuPage mayors and managers met, really starting this new year. There's a report on your table. I went along with Patty, who really enjoyed going, I think she's gonna try to attend a lot of them with us. There's a couple new things that I'll highlight off of the report that I put out. First one is that we heard from our legislative liaisons that work for us down in Springfield, and they did a little bit of an update, and what they're telling us now is that things are really pointing favorably to a capital bill. It'll probably be funded, for sure, with a motor fuel tax increase. They think it's, when it's gonna happen, it's gonna happen, it just depends on when. But it looks like it will be substantial, and of course, it'll go to help in a couple of areas. The other thing that they reported on is that deadline for submitting new bills will be February fifteenth, so we already reviewed like forty-six bills at that meeting last Tuesday. A couple of other things to highlight is, for us, Senator Collerton again is willing to fund, or to sponsor, a bill to redo the uses of the hotel motel tax. We came very close to getting that passed last year, but some amendments got thrown in there that really kinda made it unattractive to us, and so we had to pull back from it. So, looks like we're gonna try to go forward again this year. The other thing that was suggested, and I think that staff has got a good suggestion here, is that we all support talking with DuPage County, that they consider doing a three-dollar tax per room from the county on hotel motel, and let it self-fund the DuPage Visitors Bureau. Instead of each of us communities making a donation to do that, this three-dollar county tax would self-fund it.
And they wouldn't have an option?
No, that's right. And so, it seems to me like that might be good. Again, we'll get more on that later. There is a couple of things that came up that were, had long discussions. One is House Bill 270. This one is interesting, because right now, if we had a place in town that took orders over the telephone, the tax comes here. This new bill wants to have the tax go to where the product is delivered. So that would be a big change. We're monitoring it for now, but we'll try to keep everybody informed. Other than that, I think that it was a good beginning, and our next meeting will be February twenty-sixth, and we'll keep everybody informed. But the new head of government have all been sworn in, the state legislature has been sworn in, so, and I just saw in the paper the other day that they're starting to make their committee assignments, so we'll see how that all comes out.
Well, thank you, trustee.
No, that was, it was a good meeting, and I think Patty enjoyed it, so, well, you'll have two of us at the meetings from now on. And that's it, sir.
Thank you. Trustee Guzzo.
Thank you, mayor. Couple things. First, I wanna remind everyone that the next Public Safety Committee meeting will be Thursday, February twenty-eighth, four-thirty here at the Village Hall. Everyone is invited to attend. Next, I just wanna do a quick update. Every year, the fire department will put up a wreath that has red bulbs in the wreath, and they ask all of our residents to please be very careful with their Christmas decorations, because if there is a fire that is caused by a Christmas decoration, a red bulb will be pulled out and a white one will be put in. I am happy to report that everyone worked together and they were able to keep the wreath red this year. So, thank you very much, and I'm hoping that this is gonna be something going forward where we constantly see all the red wreath. Secondly, too, I just wanna do a PSA about, let's, if we can, please help the fire department and public works by shoveling the snow from your fire hydrants. We hope that we never have to get to it during this cold weather, but please, that will be a big help if everyone could help assist with that. The fire department is also offering free CPR classes. The first class will be Wednesday, May twenty-second, and the second will be Wednesday, October twenty-third. You can sign up through the Village website. They are also hosting their Citizens Fire Academy. Sign-up is available on the website. It is a free five-week course, March thirteenth through April tenth, to learn about fire prevention and fire safety. It is really a good, a good class to go through, you get a lot of good information, so if anyone is interested, please go to the website. The police department, not to be left alone, they have a safe exchange zone. Just a reminder to everyone, that if a citizen needs a safe location to make transactions, such as internet sales, or even a safe location for child drop-off and pickup, there is a designated safe exchange zone located at the police department at five-hundred North Cass. And I just want to say that I've had a couple residents say it's a really good idea, they feel very safe. So I wanna say thank you to the police department for that, 'cause that is a big, a big addition to help people out with that. And that's all I have, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next Economic Development Committee meeting will be next Wednesday here, February sixth, at nine a.m., and we meet right next door in the meeting room. We'll be talking about outdoor dining, and we'll also be recapping our upcoming restaurant week. This is gonna be our third annual, starting February twenty-eighth to March tenth. This is where you can visit as many restaurants that are participating, and then you can vote at westmontchamber.org. Everything from best coffee to best barbecue will be different categories. While we were gone, again, DJs celebrated their twenty-sixth anniversary, so congratulations to them. And then, Yuz Mandarin hosted the State of the Chamber, and we welcome the new chamber board. Steve Wozniak from Midwest Bank is going to be the new president, and he's going to be heading up the chamber board this year. So, we congratulate them and look forward to them serving our community. And that's what I have.
All right, good. Thank you. Moving on, items to be removed from the consent agenda. Does anybody see any items they'd like removed? I'd ask manager May to please read.
Thank you. Tonight, first item on the consent agenda are Village Board minutes. Board to consider approving the minutes of the Village Board meeting held January seventeen, twenty-nineteen. That's followed by Finance Ordinance Number Nineteen, in the amount of two million, two thousand, six hundred, twenty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents. I do wanna point out, only because it's kind of an unusual way, one million of that is a single expenditure, and it represents the participation with the, we have a, well, it's an intergovernmental agreement with the park district, related to stormwater management improvements that are being done on their property by the natorium organization and all those constructive improvements. We already have an agreement approved, and that's all done. The, there's a mechanism in that agreement, how to disperse the funds, and with a lot of checks and balances, both by the park district and the village, and that all remains in place. This representation here is the full amount, and I'm looking for a mechanism to put it all in one account at the park district, so that, just to expedite processing it each month. But, I haven't figured out how to do that yet, but we're hanging on to that until, until that's solved. Got John working on it for me. Next, our purchase orders. First purchase order is Push Wellness Solutions, twenty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. This is the wellness assessments and the benefits, July through December, and that will be the last payment to that organization. Next, Thomas Engineering Group, fifty-seven thousand, one hundred, four dollars, ninety-six cents. That is for the design engineering services for the CBD alley, project, section D. Third, and final purchase order is Adventist Bolingbrook Hospital, thirty-one thousand, twenty-three dollars, and that's for the medical evaluations done for fire department personnel. The total of purchase orders is one hundred, eight thousand, three hundred, seventy-seven dollars, ninety-six cents. Brings the total of purchase orders and Finance Ordinance Number Nineteen to two million, one hundred, eleven thousand dollars and ninety-four cents. And that completes the consent agenda.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion by Addington to approve.
Second, Nero. Which we made in second, and a question. Seeing on roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Motion passes. We move on to new business aid. Increase in available Class Twenty-Three liquor license. Board to consider ordinance increasing the number of available Class Twenty-Three liquor license by one for Leji Corporation Fremont Bar and Grill, eleven fifteen Fairview Avenue in Westmont. Deputy Liquor Commissioner Muller.
Evening, Mayor. Village Board. Leji Corporation doing business as Fremont Bar and Grill at eleven fifteen Fairview Avenue. Submitted an application for a Class Twenty-Three liquor license. This allows them to obtain a video gaming license or permission from the Illinois Gaming Board. A Class Twenty-Three license is required to provide or allow video gaming by the Illinois Gaming Board. Fremont Bar and Grill wishes to provide video gaming as an amenity to their customers. The primary business will continue to be that of a restaurant. You have my report review. With me today is Genevieve and Mark Zayed, or Genevieve is the owner of Fremont Grill, and Mark is the general manager, they are husband and wife. One note, you will note in my report, was that Genevieve did have an association with a business in Aurora. Mark sent me this morning, they both sent me that that association has ended. Their last payment was January thirty-first. As of tomorrow, February first, she will be off that license and no longer an owner there. They did give me a rather lengthy contract showing that sale, and they'll be removed. So, just so you have that information as well. Also, this morning, you should have a copy, Genevieve and Mark created a letter for the board, they wish to personally express their wishes for the license. With that being said, they are eligible to receive this license, and I will let Mark and Genevieve answer any questions and/or present why they wish to have video gaming.
Hello, trustees, mayor. I put in our application for the license for gaming, and for two reasons mainly. Laura's is not too far from me, they're Laura's Cafe. And one of the things that's happening a lot of times, is I've cultivated a new group of people that come to the area that normally never came to the area. And what's happening is they're leaving my location, they're walking over to Laura's, and they're gambling there. And I'm losing revenue from sales of food and alcohol, sales. And the reason why is because I don't have gaming. And there's also another collective of people. I come into my bar, and they tell me, if you had gaming, we would come here more often, but they don't, because I don't have something that they want. So they go to other bars that are not, and not, not mine, to gamble, or to game, I guess, as if you wanna call it. And I just feel that I wanna satisfy all my customers' needs. I offer great food at great prices, and a lot of you've been there, ate my food, and will attest to that. But I just wanna satisfy all their needs. So I'm not losing money for the village, not losing money for myself either, and my family, and for the business to stay successful. So I ask you respectfully to approve the ordinance for me to get gaming.
And, Mark, where would you place the machines?
I already have a wall that's in the back. I don't have to do any type of construction, and I just have to lay it out. The only thing I have to run is a dedicated electrical line for, for that, 'cause the state requires that, I believe, in the ordinance. But other than that, I wouldn't have to do any construction whatsoever.
Questions?
Let me follow up on the one you just asked. Machines are supposed to be segregated somehow.
Yes.
Will you have a, some kind of a panel, or, or wall, or fence, or something?
They'll have the, what do they call those things with, you know, if you go through a movie theater, where they have the, when you go to the line to buy the ticket, the stanchions, they'll have those to block it off, so no kids walk into the area. And I'll be there, if anybody knows, I'm there pretty much ninety to a hundred hours a week, between my wife and myself, so.
If this goes forward, can we specify at least the minimum of that? Only because, again, I think I've mentioned this before, I walked into so many places that have yellow tape on the floor, and apparently it's approved, I don't like it. I much prefer what he's talking about doing, or even a, some kind of a
Knee wall.
Kind of a wall, or even a platform halfway up, so that there is some segregation, so that you keep people away from it. And that's just a question of whether or not, I know there's dual control here, so what can be required?
Yeah. There is dual control, and normally that would fall in the exclusive jurisdiction of the state gaming board. Now, you are issuing a liquor license, and with a liquor license, you can issue, you know, special conditions, restrictions as well, as long as you're not usurping the authority of the gaming board. And what you're actually doing is saying, not only do you mandate that they comply with the state gaming board restrictions, but you might want something a little more strict. And typically, you can be more strict, as long as you're not stepping on the state's toes. So if you wanted to say those stanchions with the velvet rope are required, or if you wanna require a knee wall, I think that would be legally enforceable.
Okay.
Tom, you had some?
I'll just say, mayor, it is required by the Illinois Gaming Board that it be segregated off. They are inspected, before they get their final approval, to turn the machines on, they are inspected by inspectors from the gaming board, who must approve that to make sure there's some type of barrier there. Whether the yellow line, I think, I agree with you, stretching it, but they do come out and check as well, Tom.
Other questions?
Question for, Tom.
Yes, sir.
Can you tell me, I think I asked this the last time this came up, too, is that we haven't seen an increase in video gaming as far as customers. It's kind of a flat, I think we discussed this. It's just kind of, you know, we reach a certain level, and it just kinda plateaued, and it stayed there.
I, I wonder the, the gaming revenues monthly, the amount gained in the Village astounds me. It's usually close to over three million dollars a month that's gained in town. That's starting to level off, but we've seen fluctuations in businesses. We lost Oprah Kills, we've gained others in some places. Uncle Bubbs just went live, so now they're, so we're starting, we haven't really leveled off yet, so it's kinda hard to answer that. But I'm not seeing a huge increase, that's also limited by the number of hours that a business is open. When I was down talking to Mark and Genevieve, Mark did mention that when he goes to Laura's place, there's times when there's a line waiting to use the machines. So, I haven't seen it.
And I have nothing, I mean, I don't have a comment about your business. It has nothing to do with that. You know, when we set this up, the thought was proximity to others, so that we didn't have a strip mall where they were door-to-door-to-door like that. And it had, no, it has nothing to do with you. Could've been Taco Express, or anybody else. You know, it was, my, my comfort level is, we don't want 'em side-by-side, and I'm stuck on that. You know, and I know you have great food, you probably have good drinks and nice beer, too. And I wish that was enough. According to your, according to your letter, this is just a service, it's not critical.
It's not critical, however, it will help grow my business, because I'm, because I can't service all the customers and their needs. That's, that's the problem I'm having. There are customers that come in, that tell me they love the place, but they like the game, and they won't come into my place again, because I don't have games. That's, that's money lost in my pocket. Because I'm not at an evil, even level with all the other bars and grills in the area, or restaurants.
You wanna, you know, and it's, and it's not, it's not your business.
I understand.
It's the proximity to the other, and I, I don't, I don't know if I can get past it.
I understand, and I understand that I'm only seventy feet away from, from Laura's. It's not the recommended five-hundred feet, but in this, in this, in this condition, I would have to say that, when the law was written, it wasn't written for a Laura Cafe. It was written for a place like mine, to help my business, and help the village, and to help the state with revenues. And I would, I would prefer, I mean, if it was another bar in the mall, and they had gaming, I could understand that. You know, you would say, well, we're too close, there's two similar bars, and I understand that. But the cafe itself is different than my business. And even though we're at that close proximity, it's a different business completely, and we have different clientele. I can tell you this, the clientele that goes to Laura's will not come into my place. It tends to be, you know, older folks, they like the quietness of it, they like, you know, just to come in there, game and leave. While the people that come to my place, they like to socialize, have a couple cocktails, play games, and so forth. So it's a different type of business and atmosphere completely.
Any other questions?
Question for our attorney, did you review the contract? Is that whole transaction actually a reality? I mean, it sounded like it was lengthy, I don't know if Tom looked at it.
Which contractor?
That it severed ties with the other business?
No, I was not part of that review at all.
Okay.
I will, I will say this, I think that issue was something that went to the eligibility for this applicant to get their underlying class, I think it's for liquor license. They were eligible for that. That was, that condition was still present up until just recently, it sounds like. I don't think that is as relevant to the issuance of a Class Twenty-Three liquor license, which is, you know, the need of the community, closeness to other businesses, things like that.
Still part of a investigation of our license, right?
Yeah.
And I'd like to say one more thing, too. The machines that, in our area, if you look at it from south, as I wrote in my letter, south of the tracks, and west of Cass Avenue, there are only five machines in that area, and that's Laura's. The one next to me, there are no other machines in the area, other than those five. So adding five more machines in that area, I feel is not gonna overwhelm the area, or, you know, or, you know, show that it's like a gambling mecca, as, as your fair, because most of the gaming is done up and down Cass Avenue, other than Laura's on Fairview. That's the only gaming outside of Cass Avenue, south of the tracks. And if you even go north of the tracks, I think the only two places outside of that is DJ's, Uptown, and Walsh's, north of the tracks, I think. So, we're not, we're not flooding that area with machines.
Well, and don't forget that Johnny Blitzus has an application pending. That'll be a couple of months, I think.
No, he, I had a notification from today, he'd stated approved him as of today.
Oh, really? They moved it pretty quick, okay. Good.
Question I have, I know we read it signage. I don't want to see every business in the strip mall, or whatever, having the machines. With that said, though, I understand your case with this. The thing I have an issue with is, I don't wanna see these flashing signs, you know, "Game here," or "seven-seven-seven," or, I, it's always been something that I've always been, I don't want us to be, you see it all the time with all these signs and everything, and I have an issue with that.
I'll stipulate to you this, trustee, you won't see any of that on my windows and my, and my signs. The most I'll have is that little triangle thing that comes out, out on the sidewalk in front of me. It's mainly to take care of my clientele, that I'm looking to do. I'm not trying to advertise that I've got games, it'll, it'll get, the word will get around on its own. I'm not gonna be putting big seven-seven-sevens, "Come gaming here," outside my windows. For, for one thing, my windows are tinted, so I won't be able to do it. So even if putting a neon, or anything on top of it, you won't be able to see outside the glass, because of the tint on the glass from the sun.
And, you know, and I, I understand that we're seventy feet, and I, I've always been a big proponent of, I don't want 'em really close, but then you also are coming to us, saying that you're losing business. So I gotta tell you, I'm just kinda like, really have to think this through.
I mean, I really am losing business. They literally do walk out of my place, and they go there. And it's costing me money, it's costing, and, you know, that's, and these are people that would not normally go to Laura's, but, but they wanna game, so they leave and they game. And it's costing, and I see it every day, it happens, and it's costing me money, and I'm, and when I, and, and I wasn't intending to get gaming when I first opened up, but after what I've seen, and the revenue that I'm losing, I, I need it.
Thank you.
Additional comments?
Yeah, let me make one other one, just on the other side of the coin. When the Chamber had their last open house, which was back in
September.
September, thank you. Mark was there visiting, and ended up talking with a couple of the Lions Club members who were manning the Lions Club table, and ended up joining. He's now a member of the Westmont Lions Club, and has sponsored some things down at his place, and has really turned out to be, I think, a, a positive for the community from that side of the street. Doesn't change some of the other things we talked about, like how are you gonna keep the machines from, from people falling all over them, stuff like that. But I wanna make mention the fact that he has gotten involved in the community, and that's a positive. A question would be, how many machines are you gonna put in?
You know what, I would love to get five, because that's, that's, that's what I would like to have.
That's the max, yeah.
The max is the five. Just because I wanna satisfy everybody, I don't wanna have people waiting in line.
Go ahead, trustee.
So I, I think, I've been to your place a couple times, I think it's great, you do a great job of hosting there, and I think it is a good fit for machines, you know, overall. I think that when I go to a sports bar, I think if they were, you know, separated and so forth, they, they are a good fit. And, you know, I know that's, that's pretty close to Laura's, and we have concerns there, but I, I have other concerns that are making me hesitant as far as tonight versus putting it off, because the, the other bar in Aurora, you know, we, we have a movie theater coming to Sixty-third and Cass. So, so we're going to be having a younger group of people that are going to be in our area more and more, okay? Now, I know you guys are divorcing from, from that place in Aurora tomorrow, but, but we know on record that, that they've had a minor playing on their machines, okay?
They did, that for seven years.
Now, we, we also, when we originally set up about getting machines, we made it, we made it as a year probation. You're probably a year due right now, and you're coming in, just like Johnny or any of these. In that year probationary period, you guys served a minor, okay? And so, to me, the probationary period is for probation. You know, if you're on probation and you do something against the law, they throw you back in jail. So, to me, I'd like to see you come six months from now, and, and not serve another minor, and not have any issues, and, you know, personally, that's what I'd like to see, because you haven't fulfilled that year without violating the probationary period. So as it sits tonight, if, if it's a vote tonight, I'm a no. And, and that's because of that, those guidelines that we put in there, you know, if we ignore the, the probationary period, what, what was the sense of putting it in there? So, my suggestion would be, if, if we could, you know, possibly put a, to, to either postpone, you know, either down the road or something, I would, I would advise the attorney or the rest of the board, if, if they have any interest in that, because, like I say, as it sits tonight, with the violation in that year probation, I'm a no, as I sit here tonight. But, but, you know, another six months, a clean, no minors, I, I think I would have a different opinion on that.
So can I respond to that, Harold?
You absolutely can. I, I personally, I personally don't like when, when any person is up here rebuttling, because that's really not how it's designed. It's supposed to be your presentation, and then we go around, 'cause it's not a court of law, but, but by any means, you know, everyone
So I accept what my employee did in November, or October. I was ten months into the business, I had another month and a half before I'd been one year. And he made a mistake, he actually did Carter, read the date wrong, and still served her. I gotta take full blame, the buck stops here with me, no doubt about it. But at the same time, too, I've had no issues with police, no DUIs, no nothing, because I run a really nice, clean place. So, to penalize me this much because of a mistake by one of my employees, because he did actually ID the person, he just calculated the date wrong, I guess, and is that, is the way I can only think about it. And not overlook everything else I've done within the community, no DUIs, no police things, no, no police issues, like, I'm off the grid for the police department, because they don't ever come to my place, is, you're not accounting for that also. And I feel that that's also part of the probationary period. Was I the old neutral zone? Was I the one that was all problematic? I wasn't. I don't run that type of bar. In my fifteen years of running bars, I've never had a violation. One bartender made a mistake, I fired the bartender right on the spot for making the mistake, I've taken care of it, I, every shift change, I pull everybody together, and I reiterate IDing, checking IDs at all times, and I, I've never had a problem, it's my first time in fifteen years. So, while I
Well, other than the bar in Aurora, that's had problems.
But the problem with the bar in Aurora, we have nothing to do with it. We don't do any day-to-day management whatsoever. We sold the bar...
But wait, hang on a second, but, but you were an owner there, correct?
Yeah, but with the time the violation, we were, we were not there.
Again, I, I don't want to get into a rebuttal and so forth, but, but if you're the owner until tomorrow, and they have a current violation of, of, of a minor playing on their machines, it seems to me that you're a part of that.
We're a title holder, I would say, is what we are.
Okay.
Because we sold the business, we have not, we had nothing to do with the day-to-day operations since 2013. Danny Bar, the one we sold the bar to, it was just a way of making sure that if he didn't pay his monthly payment to us, that we could easily move in, back into the bar and start, start operating the bar. And as soon as his payments were done, we were no longer going to be on the, on the liquor license, nor on the gambling license.
Is there, before we entertain a motion, is there anybody in the audience who has a comment? Seeing none, then I turn to Tom.
Yeah, I just want to explain, and for trustee bearing the voices, but, yes, there was a underage enforcement check done by the police department, and this was not the first time this has happened in the village, I want to be clear on that, but the bartender did look at the underage driver's license. Underage drivers' license are vertical, all everybody else's is horizontal. He looked at the vertical license, Mark said he wrote the date down wrong. That should have been tip number one, yet that was overlooked, or overridden, or whatever. And we, we're finding it very hard to believe how someone could look at the vertical license. That should draw a red flag, and yet that was overlooked.
Did he have Basset training?
He was.
He was, yes.
All right, do I have any other comments?
You know, I think trustee Barry brought up a couple of good points, and that's why I raised the contract question, it's just timing to me seems a little goofy. I don't think trustee Barry was saying no by any means. I think it's just a matter of, there's criteria in place for a reason, and it's up to us to be fair to everybody. And if, you know, if timing is part of that, you know, I think you had a valid idea, and I would support that postpone.
I agree with that, I would support a postponement at this point as well.
Well, then I need a motion to that effect.
Motion to postpone John till...
Do you want to say six months, approximately six months?
From the violation, or from today?
From today. From today, right? Be from today. Is that, is that how you want me to proceed?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, motion to postpone for six months for, to review at that point.
Second, Guzzo.
Motion made in second, to postpone for a period of six months. On the question.
Can I ask, when was the offense?
For the...
The license?
For the license, October, I believe it was, wasn't it?
October.
October.
The hearing was held in...
December.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it was, it was a month and a half away from my, my year probation. I mean, he made a mistake, I can't, the buck stops with me, no doubt about it. But my 15 years of running bars and grills, I've never had a violation prior to that, because I'm always stringent about it, just made a mistake.
Any other comments? Again, the motion right now is to postpone for a six-month period to review it at that time. I ask for roll call.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Motion passes, six months. I think you heard all the comments. Unfortunately, I can't predict, may not have passed tonight, so this gives an opportunity to get more information, and come back and re-present it.
All right, so, we're looking at...
July 1st.
July 1st?
It's that Thursday, board meeting.
All right, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Moving on. New Business B, extension of temporary liquor license for the Hilton Oakbrook Hills Resort. Board to consider ordinance approving an extension of a temporary liquor license for P-H-O-B-H Hotel Owner LLC, Hilton Oakbrook Hills Resort and Conference Center, 3500 Midwest Road. And I've got Deputy Liquor Commissioner Mulhern.
This is the third and hopefully the very last one of these that we will have to consider. An extension is needed to allow out-of-state management personnel the opportunity to be fingerprinted for the required background checks, some but not all personnel have been fingerprinted. It's been difficult in obtaining out-of-state fingerprints for the necessary personnel in order to meet the fingerprint submission requirements. Anticipate this last extension as needed, the extension is requested February 28th. On Monday, I got two of the fingerprints from Pennsylvania, I have one outstanding. The general manager, Mr. Ellington, was finally able to come in and get his fingerprints, and we have, I'm working with the village attorney and Oakbrook Hills attorney on an issue with two gentlemen in California. We believe that by February 28th, we'll have everything all together, and then we'll make a final decision for the liquor commissioner, whether to issue the license or not. Part of the problem is getting these people in, is also as the state has changed their process, we found now prostate fingerprints, so I now have to go through that puzzle.
And if, we discussed that if there's a continued problem come February 28th, there is the option of approving the license subject to those background checks for these last two individuals being completed, with the right to revoke that license after a hearing if the background checks come back unsatisfactory. That would at least allow this process to move on, and I think it's less that these individuals are being difficult, but there's a legal reason with some pending litigation that's causing them some hesitation to provide their prints, so it might be worth delaying those.
Agreed. Motion to approve, Nero? Motion been made to approve.
Second, Little.
Motion been made in second, on the question.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Trustee Barker.
Why wouldn't you just make it February, March? I mean, it really wouldn't, wouldn't matter to us, right? As long as you guys are doing the work.
I, I know, Tom wrote up the agenda item, so I, I don't care either way how long the extension is for.
But to March, March 31st, I'm fine with that. I mean, I'm, I'm very hopeful now after getting the fingerprints from Philadelphia.
I can't believe it's so hard, number one, and number two, if you're doing the work, what's the difference?
It was tracking, most of it was tracking down who needed to get fingerprinted. We had a flow chart that gave both of us headaches, I think, trying to figure it out. And now, the out-of-state issue is what's causing the delay now. So, March, March 31st, if you want to go that far, I guarantee you, it'll be done definitely before then.
Just do it informally, whoever made the motion, ask if they agree.
Do you agree? You agree, who's second?
March 31st.
I agree that it was 31st of March. Additional comments, anybody from the audience?
Just quickly, does, do they keep their, their Class 23 and everything on, on that? They keep, they've lost, we've already taken their...
They've lost that, and they expressed no interest in video gaming, that could change, but as of now, they said they're not interested.
The date that they announced the ownership change is the date, I instructed them to turn the machines off, and they did so.
Okay.
I don't know if they've been removed or not, but they're definitely turned off.
But they'd have to reapply.
To the gaming board, and also, they would have to wait the 365 days, because it's a brand-new license.
I was going to say, they have to wait as new owners.
So, uh...
It's creepy.
What she can't get. So really, we're, the five that we gained with Johnny, we've lost five, so we're back to really kind of where we were at.
Yeah. If you look at it that way.
And again, he was approved by the state today. I would anticipate within a month, you'll see machines in this business.
Time for cruise nights, perfect.
Any, any other comments, question? With the amendment to March 31st, I'd ask for roll call, please.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Motion passes. New Business C, 16 West Burlington Avenue, a special use variance and site landscaping plan approval. Board to consider an ordinance for a special use permit and a site landscaping plan approval for a building expansion at 16 West Burlington Avenue, as provided below. Special use permit to allow the first floor to the building to be used for offices in the B1 General Business District and 2, site and landscaping plan approval. And I've got Community Development Director Sylvester to give us some additional information.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and trustees. So, Dr. Hussein, who's with us here tonight, is proposing to take the property at 16 West Burlington and basically convert the existing attic into a third floor by raising the walls. So the building currently has a very steep pitched roof. By raising the walls and flattening out the pitch of the roof, he can put a third floor for an additional residential unit in the building. So he started with site plan review in December. At that meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission encouraged him to go back and make some revisions to his plans, improve the appearance of the building, improve the quality of the materials on the building. And during that December discussion, Dr. Hussein explained that he also would like some flexibility for how he leases the first floor, including the possibility of an office tenant. And we informed him that in the B1 zoning district, offices on the first floor require a special use permit. So in January, Dr. Hussein returned with revised elevations, which I believe you have access to in your packets. Planning and Zoning Commission was very pleased with the improved appearance of the building that Dr. Hussein came back with for his second review, and the higher quality of the materials, they were very happy. And so at the January meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the site and landscape plan, which basically encompasses the appearance and the aesthetics of the building, and also recommended approval of the special use permit for the possibility of an office tenant on the first floor.
I think I just asked John, but the planning is only approved with the parking issue, when a, when that office, if it's over what we require, or under what we require, they have to come back and get a variance?
No, so even with an office tenant, I believe there's enough parking on the site. There was a parking issue because the plans that were originally submitted by Dr. Hussein showed diagonal parking stalls, and the village's interim planner, Con Savoy, who I think many of you have met, asked that the parking be redesigned so that those stalls are parallel stalls, and Dr. Hussein did make those revisions to the, the design of the parking area.
All right, thank you.
Nevertheless, to your point, the, the special use approval in the ordinance does state that the office use would have to meet off-street parking requirements. So, if for whatever reason between the apartments and the office use, it generates more parking than what's on-site, they would have to come in for a variance or find parking somewhere.
I should point out, Dr. Hussein does own a parking lot within, I forget how many feet.
Less than a block.
Less than a block away. And that, the existence of that off-site parking under his ownership was factored into the parking that's available for this property.
There was an issue at Planning and Zoning about installing an automatic fire suppression system in the building. A lot of talk about that, and a possible agreement to phase that in over 18 months. Mr. Hussein, to my understanding, has decided upon the recommendation of Planning and Zoning Commission that he do that upfront while he's performing all the interior work, rather than going in after the fact and installing that. So, the initial draft ordinance that I circulated to you one or two days ago had a condition about installation of the fire suppression system, that's now removed because it's going to be done according to codes.
That makes sense.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Barry?
Second, Little. Motion been made in second, approve, on the comments or questions? Trustee Barry?
Doctor, I, I can't think that there'd be anything else, because I watched both meetings, and I see that they've, they've covered everything back and forth.
Thank you.
You know, so, and, and hats off to the, the committee there, I mean, they really, John, I, I saw they, they got you overtime there. But, the, the one thing that, you know, moving forward, and, and the village will keep an eye on, is that, that these requirements are met. You know, we, we definitely don't want that to be an apartment in that first floor, or, you know, get over to a lounge or anything like that, so, but we're real excited to have that improvement along the railroad tracks there, so, hope it works out for you, doctor.
Thank you, thanks, hello.
Any more comments, questions? Anybody in the audience? Seeing none, then I'd ask for roll call, please.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. New Business D, Village of Westmont in lieu of a certi-bond for IDOT. Board to consider resolution to the Illinois Department of Transportation for the years 2019 and 2020, that the Village of Westmont hereby pledges its good faith and guarantees that all work shall be performed in accordance with conditions of all permits granted by the department. We got Public Works Director Ramsey.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution that we agree with IDOT. Every few years, we have to come up and, and get this approved by the village board as a resolution. So it, it is something that allows us to do work in the, in the right of way of the, the state, without having to issue a certi-bond every time we have to go out there and do any work. So, it is a good agreement that we work together, and it's something that's nice for the village to have. So we don't always, because sometimes it takes, you know, 30, 60 days, sometimes to get a permit from IDOT, but this will allow us to do this in an emergency without having to go out and get a bond.
Do I have a motion? Motion to approve, Nero? Second, Little. Bruce Lufast. A motion been made. I saw his lips move, and I think he might have...
That was like a ventriloquist, right?
Motion been made in second, on the question. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Motion passes. New Business E, lease agreement. Conica Minolta. Board to consider ordinance authorizing agreement with Conica Minolta for a new five-year multi-function device lease and maintenance agreement. And I've got our IT director to give us some more information.
So we're at our five-year renewal for the copier lease agreement. We did look at keeping the copiers and just adding maintenance onto the copiers, but it was more cost-effective to actually lease the new copiers. It would have taken us another five years to break even with the old copiers, and then you're running with equipment that's 10 years old. So, they included all of our copy costs in this lease agreement, where before, we were paying those additional, which is what you see as the savings in the document, and it also includes adding an additional copier onto the system and upgrading one at the police department to a little bit bigger copier.
Do I have a motion?
So move Guzzo?
Second, Addington.
Motion made in second, any comments or questions? Trustee Little?
There's a quick question that I have. It says that the proposed five-year agreement for new equipment, approximately $36,000 a year, this will replace the existing lease agreement costing the village approximately $52,000?
Correct.
I'm confused.
So, the currently experienced $52,000 a year, the new one will be about $36,000 a year.
Gotcha, thank you.
Which is the reduction in cost, because they're including the copy overage charges, which we're paying for now.
Thank you.
Other comments?
Just to mention, the ordinance, if this is approved, it's still subject to village attorney and finance director review. We got this a little bit late, it's kind of lengthy, so we're, Spencer and I are making our way through it. We're not going to change any of the finance terms or other terms, but just looking for things like interest rates and, and other minor changes that we've made in the past, and I've made our way through it, it looks fine.
Thanks. Any additional? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Little?